First, are we ready? I'm still waiting. Great. First up, before we start the preliminaries, we do have a public hearing on a proposed local law that would increase, add some handicap parking spaces to Church Street. So Katie, could you read the bare minimum that we need to legally?
Well, it's a Main Street address.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was all right.
Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Board of Trustees of the Village of New Paltz on August eighth, two thousand and twelve, at seven thirty for the adoption of a local law of the Village of New Paltz for the year two thousand and twelve, which would amend Chapter one ninety-eight dash one seven of the Village Code regarding handicap parking spaces on multiple village streets. Any person is entitled to be heard upon such proposed local law at such public hearing. Copies of said proposed local law are available for review at the New Paltz Village Hall, twenty-five Platico Avenue, New Paltz, New York. The Village of New Paltz will make every effort to assure that the hearing is accessible to persons with disabilities. Anyone requiring special assistance and/or reasonable accommodations should contact the Village Board.
Thank you.
Exactly.
Thank you. Sorry, Kurt. I guess we're, we want to have a discussion if we want to take action tonight.
No.
Is there anyone here to speak to the law regarding handicap spaces? Ira? Ira?
I wanted to see, I was certainly going to speak for it, but I wanted to see if anybody was going to speak against it first. That way I have my say.
Anyone opposed to handicap spaces? No?
I don't think anyone would dare.
Yeah, would you have some?
Well, I have a question. I guess Richard. I'm not on the Library Board anymore, as much as you know, but there's been a discussion this week by email among the Library Board members, present ones, about creating parking places for the library. And I know that's not part of the law tonight, but I'd just like to have it on the record that, I guess I can speak for the Library Board.
Yeah, maybe just clarify a little bit. Really what we're talking about is having a handicap charging spot that is for the public to be more convenient or close to the Library entrance.
So for the record, I think we'd like to have, even though we're talking about Church Street tonight, right?
Well, Sally mentioned a couple of streets.
There are a couple of streets. And Carol and Richard, that concern was addressed, and unfortunately, the grade of the road at the unloading zone.
Right.
Is not up to quality to put a handicap.
Well, there's some other suggestions made about where the spot could be, but I don't want to mess up your hearing, but I'd just like to have it known for the record that if you could pursue this, you know, in the future, in the immediate future, to help out the library's handicap parking problem, I would appreciate it.
Are you, are you finding that the handicap spots you have in the library parking lot are not sufficient to your needs?
Well, I think if someone had trouble walking.
Walking impaired people can't.
Getting a handicap, they have to be difficult. One suggestion was if there was anyone on Platico Avenue, the spot closest to Main Street, if that could be made handicap, and it's just a nice level walk, you know, cross the, crosswalk and on the library sidewalk to the entrance.
Look, there's a top, do any of those spot for?
Well, how about, well, how about this? Why don't we do this so we don't, because as you said, Carol, this is a little bit to the side of the public hearing. Yeah, no, I appreciate it. So why don't we do this? If the best, the fastest route to where you're going, I think, might be simply to have the Library Board, you know, someone from the Library Board just sit down with Blue, the head of Public Works, who can probably say off the top of his head where the grades are, would be good to even have a spot like that, and then come back to us with a, a big solution, and we can talk about it then. Does that work?
That'll work.
Yeah. Blue can probably tell you where the best spots are for them.
But Richard and Carol know, and Richard knows, we have had this discussion a long time, and we looked at that spot, and unfortunately, a handicap spot is for both walking impaired and, okay, and the grade junks is not correct to install a handicap parking space at the loading zone.
Right. The proposal has been, or my email by the Board members, I understand, would be to put designated spot in front of City Bank, and just across the street, which could be level across with the entrance of the library. And that's what I think you want.
That was Carol's suggestion, actually.
And so, again, if you mean with Blue and/or whatever.
And they come back to it.
And one thing, one thing to keep in mind that we've run into in the past is that I believe one of the requirements for handicap parking next to a sidewalk is that you need to have the curb, another curb cut, the graded ramp. So if you actually look at the, at North Front Street, the curbs are significantly higher than they are other places. So one thing to keep in mind is, is if there are multiple spots, it would be good, if you can find one where it doesn't require us to do that to the sidewalk, it can run several thousand dollars to do that. I remember when we, the Village worked with the school district to have more of those kind of sidewalk ramps at the middle school, I mean, I, I'm just off the top of my head, but it may have even approached five thousand dollars for two of them. So just to keep the finances, if there's two equally good spots, try to pick the one that doesn't require us to tear up the sidewalk and regrade it. So just to keep in mind.
I just, I said, again.
Like the real problem.
I know that's not, that's not really rejected for tonight, but, but if you just keep it in mind, because, because, because the whole issue of handicap parking came up, and the Library Door got quite involved, and of course Sally's been in the past, but if you could look on that, I was finding a satisfactory place for a handicap.
Well, I think maybe in the best interest of everything, if you can make a suggestion that, that would be good, because, I mean, we looked at these things, and what I discovered was, we have no handicap parking on Main Street, we have no handicap parking on North Chestnut Street between Academy and Main, and we have none on North Front. So that is why they were added to these two specific handicap situations we know about.
All right. So you guys get back to us with the suggestion, and Ira?
Well, no, I was going to just say for it, but nobody came up negative, so it makes it a lot easier. No, I just think it's an idea that's time has come, if you will. As someone who uses those spots in order to have a semblance of normal life, I find it a great idea. I mean, I know Kingston, I go to Kingston, you go down to Main Street, Kingston has handicap spots right down that whole main, both sides, and back streets like you're talking about, Chestnut Street. I mean, there are many times, I don't think it makes a difference, but I know there are many times I want to go down to Main Street, and I just drive right by it because there's no place for me to park. I, as, you know, non-ambulatory, have to, can't walk two blocks, I can't walk three blocks sometimes, you know, sometimes I can, sometimes I can't. And I just think it's an idea that's time has come, and I certainly appreciate you guys considering it.
Thank you.
As, as for the other less likely.
Anyone else?
I would just commend the board for picking this up. I think it really is your credit for all of your, if someone else was getting elderly.
Not you.
All right. Well, with that, I'd like to move to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
And move to adopt said local law? Start again.
I'm sure looking.
Oh, I guess that's probably a better way to do it, isn't it?
I guess you were sending that for the timing.
Probably start the meeting first, though. Formalities, formalities. All right.
Jason, so you were sending that for the timing?
Yes, please. Will you all please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance? My Fledge of Allegiance.
United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, well, I have one addition to the agenda, which is approval of the handicap parking law. Is there anything else that we would like to add?
Um, we want to, this is, it's on the agenda, and it's just a modification, we're not going to do contact.
Anything that's executive session, it belongs in executive session, and then we can come out, you know. And since Kurt's here, and it's a thin crowd, we may go in early and get it done. Anything else to the agenda? No?
I'll move.
All right. I'll second. All in favor? Anyone here to comment publicly? Mark, yes?
Hi, my name is Mark Fortean, I'm a village resident, and I am here to represent.
And trustee emeritus of the village.
I am here tonight to speak on behalf of the so-called radical vegan agenda, which I'm part of, and I want to say that I'm not part of the covert radical vegan agenda that is being characterized recently. I am part of the overt radical vegan agenda. A wise person once said, if you want to know where you stood on slavery in eighteen fifty, ask yourself where you stand on animal rights today, because the answer is the same. I consider this proposed law to be a one step up.
The chicken law?
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Not the handicap law. Okay. Handicap spaces are not one step up from slavery.
I assume it wasn't implicit.
Just clarifying.
The radical vegan agenda has no position on handicap spaces in that sort of thing. And by the way, you do get together, like the radical homosexuals, we have secret meetings all over the country where they're plotting to do dastardly things to people all the time.
Have you yet begun to indoctrinate our children into your evil ways?
Oh, absolutely.
All right, good.
It's happening everywhere. I mean, a quote, zero zero five of the population right now is vegan, so we're making tremendous progress.
Clearly a threat to national security at this point.
But no, I, I've listened to the arguments, and I appreciate this law, and I really do think it's a, it's a one step up, two steps back, sort of a thing. Arianna, I know this is your baby, and I'm, I'm divided about this, because on the one hand, I really care about animals, and I would like to see, if we're going to go ahead and consume animals and their products, I would like to see them more humanly taken care of. And I think this law is a step in that direction, but I think ultimately, it's not so great. So without getting into a long-winded discussion about this, I would just ask you to do two things before you go ahead and make your vote. Go online and learn about female chick procurement. If you want to raise chickens, you've got to get female chicks. And my understanding doing this research is that that practice is pretty barbaric, that at hatcheries, the female chicks are sent out to people, but the male chicks are discarded. They're often thrown to grinders live, and that's how they, you know, live their short and brutal life.
At the egg factories as well, where they make the eggs.
Right. So that's one question I have for you. Another one is, you know, what happens when roosters are created within our community? I understand that you've got great protocols in place, I love the safety protocol, the inspections that you've got prepared, but what happens when male roosters, when male chicks, roosters are created? What mechanism, what means do we have for taking care of that? I mean, how are they going to be dealt with? That's a concern of mine. You know, I know this has been characterized as sort of like a fringe point of view, but I just want to remind you all that eight years ago, that this board and this little municipality was one of the few places on planet Earth where, where people of a certain radical agenda, people of a certain fringe element could go and find sympathy from a board, a board that was truly progressive, and was looking fifty or a hundred years ahead, and not just making their decisions based upon the political links of the moment. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. And I, I don't, I don't see it as fringe or too radical, I find it an admirable position to have, so I, thanks for commenting.
I think you're fringing too radical, but.
Well, I'm fringe and radical, so.
So Mark, I have a couple of questions, I'm sorry, Ari, I don't.
No, yeah, no, I just, that was all, but.
I have a couple of questions, Mark. One is to answer your question, what happens if roosters are created? Unless, well, I love these kind of conversations. As far as I know, two female chickens can't make a rooster, but maybe I'm wrong, but if we did find someone snuck in a rooster, they would be punishable by a fine of up to a hundred and fifty dollars and a revocation of the license. So I don't know if that meets that concern. I know it's the most minor of all your points, but that one is just the easy, most easily dealt with.
I mean, I should know that we could bring it to a local farm.
Right, yeah, I think he's asking what would happen to the rooster.
But that's, that's not something that is part of.
Right, not the person, like, are we going to bring these roosters somewhere?
Oh, like if someone snuck one in?
Or are we going to drive the gardener's door and suggest it?
Or are we going to enable cathy Bunn's put a hatch?
No. No, no, unless, unless there's a fire department, like, chicken roast going on, I'd imagine that we just walk the rooster to the village boundary and let it fly free into the town, and let them do it.
I thought we were going to take them all to Mark's.
To Mark's house.
To Mark's house.
But there, but there was another point you made, which I think was more serious, which was the origin of the chicks that we brought into the village, which is a serious concern. So my question is this, is that, you know, given that it is point zero five percent of the population, and I'd imagine that the village is slightly higher than that, given our politics and demographics, let's say two percent, I don't know, for, you know, and I know it's not a hundred percent of the morality you'd like, but would you agree that were we to allow chickens in the village, that the incidence of those who do eat eggs and, and chicken, the instant percentage of that that is, comes from a local, non-torturous source would go up?
But I think.
And that the, this is the last point, so I'm having trouble stringing this stuff together. Yes, all the chickens who were first brought in would be from those kinds of factory farms, but do you see this increasing the amount of locally available chicken? I'd imagine if people move or get rid of them, bring them to farms, trade them to others, is that a continuous harm that's done, or is that a one-time harm that is then reduced because the availability of chickens to people from local sources that are not torturous increases dramatically?
Well, I think that's why it's a two-step forward, one step back, is what you said.
One step forward, two steps.
Right, exactly, that's what I meant, yeah. One step forward, two steps back. But I, I mean, I, I see, I see that, but it, I guess for me, it's the idea that people are eating these chickens anyway, so where are they coming from, and where are we getting them? And if we could source them locally, then that's better in the long-term food sovereignty kind of.
You know, if I meant, I mean, I would presume that the, the people who want to do this kind of thing, I think are people of relative conscience, I would say.
But.
And they are likely already the kind of people who are getting their eggs from Barcalucci, I don't know the farm, other, you know, humane local sources. So I don't know that there would be a great reduction in the amount of factory farm eggs consumed here locally. The other point is, you know, and, I, forgive me, everybody, I mean, we did the piggy goats like a few years ago, right? I almost, even though I am a vegan animal rights activist, I feel like this is kind of a level of absurdity.
Did we legalize that? Can you have goats?
Yes, you did.
We did. You can have goats, yeah.
Pets or meat.
Yeah, pets or meat.
In the village?
You can have goats in the village for years.
Okay, so once, once these chicks are procured, once these chicks are procured, they're going to have a certain lifespan where they're fertile, and once that ceases to happen, I would presume that the people who live in the village who want to have continuum with egg production would need to acquire other female chicks. So, you know, the syndrome, I sympathize with people, and I think it's great that we're, that the local vore movement is happening, and that people want to source their food more humanely from local sources, but, but larger paradigm with this still remains problematic for me. I don't know that you can address it with this law, but I'm just asking all of you as people of conscience to let that be part of your process when you consider it. I'll just mention one final thing. My particular, I, do you have a lot size provision in this proposed law?
Three chicks per quarter acre of property.
Okay. I want to invite any of you to come to my property. My property is point four six, four six acres. It's almost a perfect half acre, and if you wanted to walk in and see it, to get an idea of what like a half acre lot specifically looks like in the village, feel free. That's all.
Thanks.
And I believe you, I can't help, help myself, I, I believe you, I remember you mentioning to our ENCC Chair David Schepler, when we were discussing other potential sites for the Food Not Lawn project, that were private, not municipal.
Yes.
You volunteered your lawn for a public garden, or people to garden. Now, would you be interested in perhaps helping to organize a shelter for chickens no longer needed? Like a chicken rescue for, for those? And, and it's facetious, but the, the larger point is, do you see any, any way that the local vore, for those who do eat meat and eggs, this, as you put it, the local vore movement could dovetail with the radical vegan agenda in a way that would allow someone like me who likes to eat eggs to have them in a way that isn't torturous, that would meet the moral criteria of your fringe agenda?
Unfortunately, I, I totally empathize, but I think the answer is no. It's a pretty intractable position, and that's why I sympathize with you guys, because I really, I can't stick with this. But, but yeah, I would like to do the, the ENCCs, you know, I think it's the Food Not Lawn project I support. And in full disclosure, I'm a sadist when it comes to things like carrots and tomatoes, I will brutally harvest them and chop them if you want to consume them, I will. So that's a part of the critical, so.
Thanks, thanks so much, Mark. That was probably the, the most abrupt elevation of public discourse of those working I've seen in a long time, so, appreciate it. Anyone else in public comment, or any comments to the board on Mark's thoughts? Ira?
Actually, Mark got me thinking about chickens. And my thought about the chickens, which we bring up to the town board, because I think it might be more germane, is what are you going to do about taxes, or what's the possible loss of tax, and explain why? As I found out, quite by accident, the average chicken lays twenty eggs a month. If you have an acre, according to what you're saying, it's twenty-four chicks, or twenty-four hens, right? Three, six, twelve, four, sorry, twelve, which is two hundred and forty eggs. To me, that's a business. That's not a, you know, what are you going to do with all those eggs unless, you know, you want to get, I don't know, eggs can still kill you, I don't know, it's hard to figure out who does what anymore.
Depends on how much they're keet, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, I, you know, it's like, you know, you never know what's going to kill you anymore, changes day to day. But the thing that bothers me, the other thing I found out about chickens that lay eggs, is they go through a span of two to three months of not laying eggs. Now, you take a quarter acre, and it's like what Mark was saying, it bothered me additionally, let's say two of the, two, two of the hens decide that this is my time to stop laying, and they're not going to lay eggs for the next two months, just because it's their cycle. Are these people going to destroy these animals, just because, well, we can't get eggs out of them anymore, and we're only allowed to have three, so, well, let's get rid of these two and get two more? I mean, and if these are going to be businesses, which is why I wanted to talk to the town, are they going to be reclassified as businesses, as opposed to the way we do it now, like with landlords, they're classified as single-family homeowners, even though they rent out twenty-four rooms or whatever, and they should technically be classed under Village Code as businesses? And then I'm saying to myself, well, okay, let's say that you do do this, and we now have a chicken farm next to where I live.
Using it for commercial purposes is, is not allowed. It's only for, for personal use, you can't, you're not allowed to sell or barter.
And what I heard, they were talking about the X X ads, we'll have it for ourselves, we'll be able to sell to people, and they'll have these free, cruelty-free eggs or whatever.
That was, Arianna purposely eliminated that from the.
Oh, okay, I, I get it. Now, the other thing.
You can barter personally, but not for commercial use.
The other thing that I wanted to find out, and I'm letting you know, if I was going to ask the town, if I have a piece of property next to an acre that's got twelve chickens, am I allowed, am I, what's going to happen if I go before the Board of Assessment Review and say, excuse me, I bought a family residence, I'm in an all-one zone, they did change it, I now have chickens next to me. That's reduced the value of my property by what, because, you know, you've got to sell a house, there's nobody who doesn't mind chickens. And if they go to the Board of Assessment Review, and the Board of Assessment Review agrees that there's like a decrease in the value of your home, you know, like the sewers, you know, we've got to make that tax revenue up somehow. I have no problem with chickens one way or another, I just don't want to pay for it. Like I said, I'm not a vegan, I'm not, I, I, I don't eat meat per se, just because I don't want to, I'm not a vegan, I just don't like the taste of it. But, you know, I don't want to pay for somebody to have chickens because they want to have eggs. And that, that's the way we thought to throw out of it, because I know to do it at the public hearing is a little late, and I had, sorry, Mark, get, get me on the thing, because I don't like to hold things animals either, or that is something to do with.
You know, Ira, one thing to keep in mind is the very, very different range of lot sizes between the village and town.
Okay, I'm just.
So, for example, one of the early drafts of the law had it at a minimum, was it a half acre?
A half acre.
Or one acre lots size? There are very few even half to one acre lots in the village. I mean, one acre especially, if you're looking at, you know, Plains Road, maybe Northern Huguenot, Bon-Tecuview, most lots are, are marked size, you know, half acre or less, and the vast majority of village residents live on lots half acre or less.
Okay.
So, so think, but just to play out the numbers you were saying, say, for example, you know, there are, there are many, many houses in the village that are four, five, six-bedroom rentals, large as students, but not always, on, say, a quarter acre.
Mm-hmm.
So you're looking at, you know, three to six, quarter and a half acres, three to six chickens for a house of five to six people, at twenty eggs a month, that's at six times twenty is a hundred and twenty, divided by six again, and you're looking at like two almost, you know, so it's.
Yeah, they're going to do it as.
It depends on the math and the, and the geography, you know?
It depends on the number of people, I'm going based upon the people that have been coming in and asking for the, you know, they're in all ones, and which in theory is not supposed to be rentals, it's supposed to be single-family residents. Okay, the fact that they are misclassified, there's nothing you can do about that, that's something that's got to be changed, and the whole tax structure's got to be changed so it gets fair. But the point is, I understand what you're saying, if you, if you take one of the properties that got twenty-four students in it, and you have, you know, that's one egg per student, that's.
Yeah, right.
You know, but that's not the people that have been coming in, the people that have been coming in are from all ones. And even though student housing is in all one, it, it's just something, I just, you know, like I said, I don't like to see any animal, I don't believe in animal rights, I understand that, but I don't want to see any animal treated inhumane. They, you know, it, it's our responsibility as the so-called, you know, we're at the top of the rung because we made up the wrong, but I don't want to see any animal tortured or made to suffer for no reason. And if, like I said before, if the chicken stops laying, and I don't want to see somebody, I don't want to see somebody take a hatchet and chop off the chicken's head.
Right.
So I can get two new chickens.
This is no slot.
That's all the.
So I hate to break into it, Ira, but basically what you just said, you do believe in animal rights. You should probably talk to Mark and sign up for the vegan radical agenda.
Well.
Yeah, there you go. Is there, is there any other public comment, chicken or otherwise? Aaron?
Just a request on a comment. Since Kurt's here, are any of you guys, you might be interested in moving up the planning priorities?
Yeah, well, that's coming up next, so we'll, we'll, as usual, we'll push things to the front that everyone is here to, to hear.
For everyone's design.
Is there any other public comment, things in general? All right. Thank you all. So you are, let's see, any announcements, interesting?
I do.
Brian?
Um, for all of your pleasures, I want to present to you the downtown historic district preservation guidelines and recommendations.
Great.
Beautifully done with over a hundred hours of community volunteer service by Jillian Potts, she designed all of them.
Is she a SUNY student, or is she?
I think she, I think she does graduate.
Well, she will.
Yes. But everyone should have a copy, this one's for the clerk. You don't have to pass it down.
Tom is actually very nice and gave me my own.
Oh, he did give you one, yeah. So I'll leave this with you then, because any extras, he said he'll come take up.
Do you know who did the drawing? Was that Jillian?
She did have all the graphic design work, all the layout, and if you look through, it's very beautiful. Aaron, I don't know, maybe, maybe you want to take a peek at one?
I'd love that.
That might be taken too light of the lighting story, though, if you, if you're interested. They're also being distributed to the downtown business owners, the property owners involved, planning board, zoning board, such and so forth, submitted respectfully by the Historic Preservation.
Great. They do really good work.
Yeah, it's really, really nice.
Very impressive.
I think they're one of the, the best organized and relentless committees that we have. Well, thank you. Is there any, is there, are there any?
Ellen, on behalf of the board, will you thank the historic commission? On behalf of the board, will you thank the historic commission?
I I have never been appointed.
Yes, you haven't.
I I was given the notification. So, if that's any.
At our last meeting.
Send me an email.
At our last meeting.
Sorry for not notifying you, but our last meeting, we had a point at you.
Congratulations.
Surprise, surprise.
Uh, any last, any other announcements?
Right, just um.
Excuse me, on that note, um, would I be able to place an asking for some kind of formal notification?
No, we'll send you a letter.
And also for Tom to receive one, a share of the board?
Sure.
I would appreciate that.
Thank you, of course. Sure.
Uh, just gonna announce that before the end of the month, we're gonna have a a meeting, the initial meeting of the revolving loan committee, and there will also be a a second meeting of the uh consolidation study outreach committee. And we have several new members, and hopefully there'll be more, and if you're interested, please get in touch with the village clerk, because uh it's important.
Thank you. All right, uh, so we've got, and and I have to apologize for the formatting of the agenda, apparently the new um program, when I make a PDF, it screws up all the formatting, so I it's if it's hard to read, I apologize, I'll figure it out for the next meeting. But we've got, uh, Aaron, you were, what was the?
Planning.
Planning, which is number, where is that?
Oh, let's see, uh, number three under new business.
Oh, thank you, so number three. Uh, anyone else here for something specific? I assume you're liquid license? Uh, yeah, no, we'll get that, we'll cut that, we'll do that first, Wayne, because I I don't think that's, that's the shortest discussion. Except we can't.
There's no problem.
Oh, number five.
Yep.
So do five and then three?
Mm-hmm.
I wish it was a way to guess ahead of time. Um, no one else is here for something specific? All right, let's uh.
You're you're going to numbers, but there's five, number five.
Oh, jeez, yeah, I don't know, I I got a PC and it's.
We have a lot of files. No choose.
Anyway, I I pause it, first, first item under administrative business. Let's do that first, um, Wayne is here from Vaca's to to see the results of our um review of the liquid license renewal. Were there any concerns or questions about it?
Nope. And thank you for doing a good job.
Thank you very much. Double check.
All right, I'll move, uh, wait, do we move?
No, just accept it, we only have, yeah, only if there's a problem.
We accept it, we do, so no action.
Is that, is this something that's occurring with all of these policies?
Yeah, it's a new policy, we just, in case there's a red flag, the board sees it before it goes to the SLA.
And if there is a negative opinion?
That, uh, then a letter would be sent to the SLA from the village board explaining why we have concerns, and making sure that they're met before the license will be renewed. Um, I theoretically, I can't think of a a real life example, but say, for example, um, you know, we had a hundred police calls at a certain bar in a six-month period, or it was shut down twice for, you know, over optimism or something, you know, if if someone was really like abusing things, we might let the SLA know that that's been our experience with this particular business and business owner. And, you know, I can't, like I said, there's no particular business I could think of that fits that criteria, but just in case, we feel it's our responsibility to at least look at this and deal with it publicly, even if.
You have a clean bill of health from both the code enforcement officer and the police.
So we do try.
Good.
Thank you.
So, Katie, just uh, no, just so you can make no action, is the only thing you have to put in the notes? And that's all, thank you, Wayne.
All right, thank you very much.
Uh, second, so let's, Sally, this is your project, you wanna talk about the priorities?
Well, I don't know whether you all got, the board got my memo, we had a lengthy meeting with our planner, and one of the things that the board had said that they wanted to do was to um prioritize or try and come up with some sense of what our priorities were. And so I created a little survey, and the board all filled them out, and I collated them. And it's very interesting, with the exception of two things that were added by two board members, most of the rating, what was considered immediate mid-range out there, the board was on the same page. Um, so moratorium, um, B three, um, the the whole issue of getting our codes and our definitions all finished and in place, we all agreed that those were the biggies, okay?
Where did things get fuzzy? Were there were competing priorities, were there any?
There weren't, except.
I didn't see any of them.
We had two trustees at Millbrook Preserve, which I put in with the Niffen annexation, because that's all a part of the same topic. And uh we had the Business Improvement District, which was nothing that we've ever discussed before, and I added it on the list. And Mariella, who, okay, but we are all on the same page, and basically it is up to the board to decide whether they wanna direct that these are our priorities, it was really done sort of to give the mayor and Kurt a sense of where the majority of the board was on any given planning topic. And so we have done that, and unless you wanna vote on it, we're all on the same page.
Uh, you know, well, I'm not sure, I'm not sure we need to only, and let me just check with Kurt, that from what I saw from the results of what you did, that that it pretty much matches the the, even the first conversations Kurt and I had in explaining what issues were before the community as to what the priorities were, unless, am I missing, is there anything that was missing from that list that you saw?
No, actually, I think that's correct, that it was consistent.
Yeah, I tried to put everything in the survey.
Yeah.
The discussion was helpful, um, since our initial discussions, um, and uh.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so if the board doesn't object, since Aaron asked the question, I'm perfectly happy to share the results of our study with press.
I don't have a problem with that, I guess my only issue in terms of the order in which we proceed is that it, there were many things that were our bolded priorities that we all agreed upon, and which ones are we doing first?
I imagine.
All of them.
Several of them.
That's, even if that's not.
Yes, several of them. Well, no, think, hear hear me out, think about this.
Actually possible.
So, no, and you know, it actually is, say, for example, let me, let me give you one example, uh, moratorium, which involved both Kurt and Joe working to us.
Right.
So Kurt drafts something, or Joe drafts something, sends it to the other, while the board's got the response, Kurt's gotta be doing something this day, which means he's then making the phone call, so we, you can be doing things simultaneously, because it takes some time.
Right, right, I mean, I understand that, but in terms of like having a document that's being presented to us, ha, what I numbered as one, um, and Stuart and I did this together, um, was the moratorium, the planning priorities, I mean, the um, the planning, zoning, the code definitions, all that kind of, uh, the revisions, um, and there, well, there were three things that were number one, because they can happen in conjunction.
And you assigned a one to each of them.
Right.
And my point is that no one really followed the instructions properly to to achieve what you wanted to achieve, and that is normally if you are ranking something, you go one, two, three, four, all the way through all of the items. But this board chose to group them and say, these are my number ones, these are my mid-range.
I I unders- I understand all of that, I'm not, I'm not saying anybody did anything wrong here, I'm just saying, can we decide which is our number one?
Well, we can go there until a little bit, because.
Because we we narrowed it down to show which priorities we have, but can we, can we choose one that's gonna come before the board first, that might be a logical first step?
Well, I know the next one is gonna come before the board, uh, because Kurt assures me that we will have a draft law for moratorium ready by the noon deadline tomorrow.
Okay, this is what I'm asking.
Yep, and and so, I'm I'm just filling you in, because I wanna make sure, so, because once we get that, so that will be for our meeting in two weeks, we'll have that law ready to discuss, and once that's in place, that both the zoning changes and the master plan proceed kinda on that, you know, on parallel tracks.
Right, and and that's why they were, right, the master plan, that was.
So I guess, so that. Yeah, exactly. Those, I think, are clustered, as you said, yeah.
Right, well, and that's why we clustered them as such, I was just wondering, I mean, we're obviously not going to have a master plan before us in two weeks, so which is going to come before us?
We, Kurt, I guess you could answer, yeah, and but after that, maybe Kurt, you could answer this, you know, what's the succession, and then Aaron can ask the question.
So now I got.
Sure, and by the way, I mean, I I understand completely the, um, some things can be done with concurrency, and some things perhaps can't. And there's a natural order, um, that you guys also alluded to in the discussion, and that is, um, for example, the moratorium um would be the first, and is also a rel- is is not a particularly heavy lift or cumbersome in terms of process. The master plan and the code, of course, um, no matter how smoothly those processes go, there's an awful lot of um checks and balances and um and pro- and due process for those, so they, um, you know, I could lay out a a schedule by which you can anticipate when you might have a master plan under um, under good circumstances, and uh, and a rhythm of of meetings leading to a ma- a plan, and then, and then there'll be, I I imagine, from what I've, from the, from the last six or seven weeks in the in the position, what I've gathered is there would have to be some things that would be, where the code would be adjusted before the master plan were finished, I don't think there's any way around it, I think that simply, um, having your municipal planning functions coincide with the real life and real-time needs of your constituents.
And you really can't impose a moratorium without exempting two areas that this board has promised to address before your arrival, and that's Mr. Niffen and the B three.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's why.
And that'll be in the draft that we'll have to look at, but Brian, you haven't said anything yet?
Well, I was gonna, um, for a, do you, I mean, you know, the master plan is supposed to be the community will statement, it's supposed to be where we're headed. It's the guidelines by which the community sets us to enact all of our policy and our zoning changes. So, I mean, you know, I I think of it as, you know, they can kinda run simultaneously, but I I also find it kind of hard to adopt a a complete review or overview or re- revising of all of our zoning codes without really understanding what the community is still looking for, I mean, the the master plan is pretty old at this point, how how do you feel?
Well, we would not, um, be.
Actually, you know, Kurt, why don't, eh, why don't we enter Brian's question, you enter Brian's question more comprehensively, because it's, it feeds into what Ariana was saying on Sunday, could could you just sketch out roughly what this look, because we have three of our top priorities, moratorium, master plan, zoning, and they are all lived together, could you just sketch out a rough, like, what does this look like, and?
Okay, can I say something?
Hold on a second, please.
The master plan was a three-two vote, it did not, by this board's own rating, all five of us rated planning and zoning code definitions as the priority. The Niffen property, Millbrook slash Millbrook Preserve.
Well, the definitions are under Joe, not Kurt, so that's legal, not planning.
Yeah, yeah, no, but, well, I'm just saying, what, all we were unanimous on were planning and zoning code definitions, Niffen, Niffen property slash Millbrook Preserve, the B three, and the moratorium, okay? Those we all, all five of us said.
Y- absolutely.
Okay.
However, the moratorium.
Moratorium has to happen very soon.
The what, but the moratorium, the purpose of the moratorium is not to have a moratorium, it's to revise the master plan and update the zoning laws.
And it allows to have the time to.
So, the moratorium leads to the other two, so.
Yes, yes.
Yep.
That's the whole, it's one project, really.
Right.
So, I guess Kurt, I mean, because you mentioned you could rough out a timeline, just so we're, I know, Aaron, you're waiting and Aaron's doing.
We, with quick clarifications, what's the moratorium for?
To update the master plan and the zoning code.
Moratorium on residential, on residential development, most likely.
Well, that's, there's a whole bunch of other, hold on, before we all start shooting from the hip here, the purpose of moratorium is to put a pause on development while you change the rules by which development happens.
Right, but where is the moratorium?
We don't, we haven't, we don't have a draft yet, and it's, it's, we're jumping the gun here, we don't have the language yet, so we're, Joe and Kurt are working on that, and Kurt can probably explain some of the ideas, but, and I think this is really the question that we're, uh, I'm asking, is the moratorium process itself is the same as passing a local law, and there's, you know, a certain amount of time. What happens next? We know that we we want a moratorium to put a pause on development, to give us breathing space to rewrite the rules. What happens after we do that? And does it, and 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 is Sally right that the master plan is not a priority, is the zoning code a thing, and you just give us your professional opinion of what happens after you pass a moratorium for this purpose?
Is the master plan the law of the people?
Yes, essentially, yes, yes, certainly, and that, um, it it's certainly meant to reflect that. Um, the moratorium would be the first step towards, um, trying to maintain, generally speaking, existing conditions with regards to patterns of development and land use. In other words, not to lose the opportunity simply by virtue of what's, what's called in 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 planning and zoning and 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 law books, um, a race for diligence to simply, um, beat any new regulations or new zoning designations. So, that's, that's, um, it's well established that that is often necessary, and it's a a very legitimate pursuit. The moratorium may exempt certain districts, may exempt certain uses, and actually, what I found in trying to draft it so far is that I have thought of of exceptions, and of course, there's, um, the B three in particular, where um relatively recent good planning has been done, and as we've all discussed, there's not much necessary in order to go forward there. After the moratorium, which also is a, um, an exempt action under SECRE, giving you an I, an exam, an idea of the fact that nobody needs writing EIS on a moratorium, it it's really stopgap or interim zoning, it's an amendment to your existing zoning code by which you'd be, um, again, temporarily holding in place the 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 patterns of development in order to reevaluate them and enact any new policies. Um, and then the implementing regulations is essentially the changes in the code that may occur. So, moratorium first, um, that gets into place rather quickly, then the obligation of the community is, and the municipality, is to quickly, um, start up the mechanisms to, um, to develop a new and update the master plan, and of course, adopt it. And as long as that's done in reasonable time, and in keeping with certain performance standards that are forth in state law, then you would adopt your master plan. Um, in our community, I have a feeling that, um, that we'd have good participation, and that it could be kept on a reasonably predictable schedule. Um, there are many communities where, once it gets to the point of adopting new regulations, it becomes quite bogged down, so that is, um, I think, the tougher job anywhere, anywhere, um, one is, but nonetheless, I don't see, um, um, the type, I don't see the type of delays, um, even in adopting zoning code after a master plan, but there are some code changes that that may need to occur while we're under the master plan, again, that just comes back to the reality and limiting the inconvenience to, um, to residents as well as, um, uh, owners of property that may not be developed.
Now, the two things I think might clarify, one is, uh, in in, I think it was even in your job, Aaron, you you had mentioned that you had checked out the the master plan you have and said, i- it didn't seem to you that we needed a complete overhaul, but maybe just a a revision, and I'm wondering if that's still true now that you've been in the office for a a few weeks? And second, we had had a couple of kind of spitballing conversations about whether we need to do the master plan and then the zoning code, or whether, to what degree they can happen on parallel tracks, so we shorten the time?
We certainly have to.
And I guess, third is, what what's your prediction for best case and whatever case scenario for the total time for this process? You know, are we talking six months, or are we talking three years, you know, what, so?
Well, for, um, for the master plan, I think, I think, um, a community would be looking at at approximately one year from start to finish. Um, zoning, while that has gotten bogged down, and and particularly with towns where most of the development has occurred in New York State, is within town, town governments, um, whereas villages and cities, um, are are permitted to be a little bit more dynamic, not everything has to be, um, so written in stone. Um, with regard to our conversation about, uh, the the status and and the condition of the current master plan, the ninety-four master plan is not at all a bad document, and its objectives are really the things that I think many of the objectives could be, um, could be simply transferred into a new master plan. It's some of the detail, it's some of the new, um, the most, the current state of, um, of ma- of municipal master plans in New York State has advanced somewhat, and of course, some some provisions in them are tailored to, uh, to dovetail with state and federal programs, and and now that a lot of state agencies and and others, um, must pay particular attention to local master plans, whereas before they did not. It might have to do with transportation improvements, it might have to do with, um, the administrative grant programs that are started at the federal government level and and then administered by the state level and provided to municipalities. So, there's, um, uh, they can, they're much, they're more strategic than they used to be. But no doubt, in looking at the ninety-four master plan, there's a lot of valuable information, a lot of valued committed, uh, valued community input that probably has not changed in 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 its sentiments, and the objectives, um, even, um, looking at the the core business district in particular, the objectives around the village, um, in many cases may have not cha- may not have changed much at all. The, um.
And to what degree can we run them simultaneously, it's at some areas, I mean, and and if we can't run them simultaneously, how much time do we tack on to this year of master plan to deal with zoning code?
Okay, well, to answer the first question, um, we certainly can, at the same time that we're doing our master plan, we're not barred from doing certain code changes. I think, um, the larger the cha- and more more significant the changes in the code, uh, on a little, there you're on a little bit, um, uh, less firm ground as far as conducting sweeping changes while doing your master plan. But I think I understand, again, the reality is that, um, that, um, time passes quickly, and you need to keep momentum going, so there there could be adjustments to the code to relieve some frustration with some of the, uh, the things that we deal with in our own code, we we may often feel like, um, many in other communities where, um, you feel a little bit imprisoned occasionally by your code. Um, so, and among those things is parking, I I feel I need to bring, um, there's a, there's a a proposal where I might just expand the four hundred feet that is currently in place to to use municipal parking lots um, in in favor, uh, and com- to complement onsite parking. Um, but that's just, that's a quick fix, but it's, um, it's sort of surgical, but it's not comprehensive. Um, comprehensive car- parking plan, um, would would actually require a, um, an inventory of each and every space, and the conditions for parking that are associated with that particular space. Not at all an impossible task in the village of Newpolt's and in most villages, but at the same time, um, that's more comprehensive, but at the same time, I'd like to, I see businesses that are suffering right now, and clearly, they're being, um, they're being held back a little bit from being all they can be by, um, our current standard for onsite parking.
Which is different than parking plan.
Yes.
The planning board's parking requirements.
Yes, that's correct, for for development and association with new development and redevelopment and.
I did share the report with Kurt, and so, what I'd like to ask Kurt, since he's the professional, are we misguided in our prioritizing?
Uh, no, um, no, I don't think so, I, but again, I I think, you know, this was a fundamental question, uh, that you all had brought up at the beginning of this discussion, and that is, um, um, whether certain things need to be done totally independently um, uh, before the things get started, that's not a luxury that most in their, in their, um, vocations are afforded, and, uh, planners should not be afforded with that either, and and I think when you see in any responsible, for example, the description of the position as I first, um, viewed it when applying, it was very clear that you were expected to tackle a number of things at once, and that's a very, that's, of course, commonplace, um, in any, um, private or public, um, institution by by responsible title, you're expected to, um, to be able to cope with, um, concurrent, uh, priorities, so while some things may be slightly mutually exclusive, in many cases, we're not barred from, by by having taken up the master plan, we're not barred from making changes in the code which provide, um, um, comfort and opportunity to, uh, residents and and, uh, business owners and so forth.
I'm gonna move to accept the report, that doesn't mean we're prioritizing, we're accepting the report. Period, the end, so the minute Joe that we discuss this, and it's left to the professionals, I will give you my copy soon.
I'll second that.
Okay.
I I have some, uh, discussion, which is kind of, we're talking about doing things in parallel. Um, last meeting, we had a, a law before. Last meeting, we had a a law before us that was proposed local law on uh fracking. And uh at that it was based on a uh environmental rights theory. And uh Ariana and I had just gone to an ICOM program where we had a part of the the course was about that. And they talked about where the state stands with uh case law and so forth on that. And uh there are there were two other theories, one was under the zoning laws, a ban under the zoning law. And one was uh road preservation theory. And uh I said that by this meeting I would try to have something additional on that because it was just some paperwork. Um what you all have here is uh some proposed model local laws uh which however prepared by the Community Environmental Defense Council, which is in Ithaca. And one is, I said I would have it here tonight and 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 there it is, but in this in this packet, it there are uh part of this is a mo- moratorium also on this particular thing, which is a effect of moratorium and prohibition within the village of natural gas and petroleum exploration and extraction activities, underground storage of natural gas and disposal of natural gas or petroleum extraction, exploration and production wastes. And uh there's an example of it, there's um also uh a little slideshow in there about the presentation they make to various municipalities. There's two uh statutes from other uh municipalities that have enacted this kind of a local law, one of which is based on high impact theory as opposed to a uh just a ban on it. And and the reason I bring this up uh about moratorium is if we're gonna have one, I don't know if these will go in parallel i- if the board wants to do this, and I and I got the impression that they do because they were ready to vote on the environmental rights uh theory. Whereas these folks who work on this, that's what they do, um felt that while that was a good symbolic gesture, they wanted to have a theory where they could really win in court. And in fact, the two lower cases so far, they have won. Uh the people, the municipalities in Dryden and Middlefield uh that have passed these.
Is Caroline, is Caroline been in court, do you know?
Caroline.
Just south of Dryden.
I don't know.
I think they had pa- they were dealing with it, they don't actually have zoning.
Yeah, so so so.
I don't understand what that has to do with our planning priorities and accepting.
He's getting to it.
Look at you.
Well, if if we're talking about we're talking about planning and you wanted to have an anti-fracking law and you wanted to have it by tonight and you're gonna have to have a moratorium if that's how you wanna go forward, then I I think it's all part of the same discussion.
You think that moratorium is the moratorium the people were talking about in zoning?
No, but it but it is a moratorium and it is about your zoning, uh so I mean if we're.
It would be it would be included in the other.
I I I don't know as if it would, so I I just think that this is this is a parallel situation.
No, it would.
And so if we're we're this is an example with maybe you're you maybe you do a year's moratorium, but maybe you're gonna act on your code in this instance sooner because people are concerned that companies will come in and try to uh have leases or some kind of contract so that if there'll be somehow grandfathered, it'll be a taking theory and all that. So there's a lot of law here and uh I also spoke with the person who's the litigator in Manhattan who litigates these cases, who suggested that I speak with these people. So um I just think you know, this is something that should be considered together, it's not the same law, but if if you wanna act quickly, I think we were gonna have to look at these things in parallel. And 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 I'm sorry, this is yesterday was as soon as I could get this out of my computer, I I tried to send everybody an email with attachments. Apparently it didn't it didn't work, but anyway, the attachments are these.
I think I got it. I got it, I got it.
Well, certainly, and.
And.
So so that's why that's why I brought it up because it seems to me if it's if it's important to the board, then these things better go on in parallel because there's you know time constraints, so that's.
Well, that's.
But let me address this one just briefly, 'cause there's one element that keeps we get forget it. Um there is no place in the village that's currently zoned to frac. There's no industrial uses, no mineral extraction allowed, no nothing. So if someone wanted to set a fracking operation in the next twelve months, they would have to come before us to get a zoning change to allow them to do it, which even if we wanted to, would not be allowed under a moratorium unless it was in one of the exempted areas.
Well, it that may or may not be so if if you're talking about
So it's like two versus one stone, right, so.
They're talking about, you know, maybe you're talking about storage and where you keep this material that comes out of there, which is.
There's nowhere zoned for that.
Well, you know, maybe. Uh and and also in 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 the materials, it also suggests in their presentation that uh besides the specific thing you're going to do if this is important to 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 the board is that you look at the whole code to see if there's any backdoor ways that these companies can come in and uh take advantage of the situation. So you know, while we're looking, uh it seems to me to make sense that we look at this as well. Unless if if you don't think it's important that you you think it's not gonna happen or it can't happen, then fine. But that's that's the report in any event.
Well, actually, I. Um and thank you, Stuart, I'm in fact, I'm I'm glad to have these materials because while I may not know right now if the two moratoriums would be would be one, I may not know the the precise mechanics. But I am concerned that certainly the industry is busy practically around the clock um evaluating its options and its strategies. And New York State already has a, I think, a something to be proud of in terms of um some of the communities you mentioned, I think. And I have been following it um even before I came to New Paltz. Um as you mentioned, it's um the the first level of the courts and then the appellate division and I don't know if the Court of Appeals has accepted the case yet, but I suppose they will.
And I I don't think that the appellate division has made a decision yet, they might be accepting it, it's coming up, I don't know.
If I may say so, I'm I'm heartened by the decision so far. I think um if you look at the experience of our neighbors and neighbors in Pennsylvania and of course along the southern tier, they felt the secondary effects. But to get back to the point at hand, I'm happy to have these materials and while we may not allow it, um there's no lack of resources being expended on the part of the industry to figure out one way or another to accomplish what they want. And and I we can talk about this later, but one of my fundamental concerns is that even where it occurs, it's a boom that might last eighteen months to twenty four months and they're there and gone. And um there's a lot left behind that's um uh that so it's in in no way, it's hard to even see it as a even from an economic development point of view, it's hard to see even in some of the um uh the more hard-pressed areas in upstate New York and the southern tier that it's um it's it's meaningful in terms of uh long-term economic development. So I'm happy to have these materials and um Ariana had also provided me with the um uh the PowerPoint and some of the other materials. So I'm I'm pleased to have them and would like to report back, yeah.
Any other questions? Sorry, there's no voice. Any other questions for Kurt? No, or or I guess discussion about our planning priorities, should we be on the same page roughly or what?
So. So I I'm just um so are we just approving these as?
You're not approving, you're accepting the report, period, the end, so it's in the re.
The one that we put together.
Yeah.
The one you put together and that we've shared, you're just accepting the report there and the priorities.
To give Kurt and I some background and
And that gives Kurt
Dire- and and advice and direction.
And the mayor, the direction that the board wants to go. It's not approving the report.
And it doesn't and it doesn't for.
So it's not the adding stuff?
No, it's no, based on what we know now, this is our these are our priorities, something else comes up, you can just add it to the, you know,
Okay.
we'll add it to the queue and put it where it needs to be.
And and was that our intention of doing this, is just to have vague generality or we want something specific?
To state how we felt and what to see whether we were all together basically in the way we wanna move, and we are.
Does that sound good to the board?
Yeah, this is fine with me, so it's an aye vote.
So I guess uh the motion is to accept it and it's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kurt. Yeah, you guys took it off my mouth. Um Ellen, what do you Ellen and Jeff, are you here for anything in particular?
No, just here.
Ellen and Jeff, take us out of the Aza.
Thank you. I'm curious about something.
No, we're not, we're we're curious about something.
So we have, I mean, we have a bunch of things, we do have Kurt that we want to go to executive session, we wanna do that now and then come back? Or do we wanna go through the rest of this and then go to executive session?
I think that would be nice.
I mean, I think it would be nice of us, yeah, exactly.
I'm courtesy to Kurt.
To do good.
Maybe we should sit through the rest for a meeting.
You guys okay with hanging out for a few minutes? We'll be we'll be back shortly. Um alright, so I'll move to go to executive session to discuss um what's the language? Matters in particular.
Matters in particular.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, I'm sent to.
Pantel litigation.
Yeah.
Matters of total litigation.
Yeah. Uh is there a second?
Second.
And we'll do another executive session on the other stuff.
All in favor? Yeah, we'll do this personal stuff later.
Uh aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Uh so chicken law, I mean, there's there's nothing to be discussed, it's uh I added Stuart's um proposed edits. If there's anything anybody else has to talk about, we can talk about it. I'm obviously not opposed, but I'd like to send public hearing. So I want to motion to set a public hearing on, okay, what's the number of this? Local law.
Seventy dash one.
Mm-hmm.
Well, the local law on the keeping of chickens for um our next regular village board meeting on August twenty second at seven thirty.
I'll second you.
Alright, uh any discussion?
Yes, uh but no, it's not a discussion on that, but I I have a question. If uh Ariana knows that I'm going to move to amend, do you want me to do that tonight and see?
You would have to if we're gonna have the public hearing.
Okay.
And actually, she would have to, well, no, we can, I guess we can have amended now and yeah, okay.
Right. Okay, I'm going to move to amend that we go back to the half acre requirement and six chickens.
Is that acceptable to you, Ariana?
That is acceptable to me.
Okay, uh so I guess six, do we vote on amendments?
Well, somebody has to second it.
No, we just vote.
Second.
Okay.
That's great, 'cause I was thinking about that too, that was bothering me as well.
Um.
So so clarify, clarify.
So if you're not, I can, I'm sorry, so give me one second, do we, we don't vote on amendments as long as they're acceptable to the person who told it by it.
Well, uh yeah, uh I mean, she needs six.
She's accepted it, but the rest of us don't, okay, just tell what I can, so please.
Okay, then we're, yeah. Now I will second the hearing again.
Okay, Stuart, you're clarifying something?
Uh so just to to clarify what that means, so that means it's it's a half acre, that means you have to have a half acre to have any chickens, is that correct?
Yep, yep.
Uh fine.
Okay, uh I do have one uh concern about Stuart's changes. Uh 'cause I did discuss it with uh Joe Ariel when I noticed them, there are a couple of things that are not um doable in terms of the law. Um specifically the sections where it says in in the repeated administrative clauses, um wherever it says, you know, from the building inspector or designate appointed by the village board. Um the village board doesn't appoint designees for other staff, uh so generally the language is the building inspector or their designate. Or if the village board wanted to appoint someone al- other than the building inspector, it would have to be specifically laid out in this law, who other than the building inspector
Mm-hmm.
has the authority to issue these licenses. Specifically because we also have uh a village board appointing designate um enforcing a law uh which I'm not sure is legal because they would not necessarily be a public enforcement officer were the ones who are able to enforce laws in the village.
Okay, oh let me ask a a question, and the reason I put that in there is so who is the building inspector able to designate? Who's among the pool of people, just another?
I don't know.
Or enforcement officer?
A deputy?
And that's they just can't pick anybody on the street and say, I don't, uh that's the question.
I don't, I I I don't know, and that's why you
You're a chicken keeper.
That's why I put that in there.
That's why you should have run this by the village attorney before before it came back to the table, 'cause there may be other things in here that are not gonna hold up in court. So if if we make changes to the laws, we need to run the changes by the village attorney as well to avoid situations like this. 'Cause that's the one I caught, but I don't know about the other.
This was sent to Joe.
Uh Joe tells me the last thing he has is is the one that uh the date was the nineteenth of July.
The last week.
And so this and so s- that was the main, that which Stuart had changes to make that were written and given to you, but not sent to anyone else.
Okay.
So this is the person I've seen Stuart's changes uh in the packet, and those were not sent to the village attorney. So I don't know if there's anything else in here that might not that might derail the law if someone doesn't like it. And I don't know what to do with that, or if that's a serious concern that people wanna hold off for another meeting for the village attorney to review the latest, most recent draft or something like that.
Well, he, I mean, if he, did he look at this?
He he's never seen it.
Well, then how did he?
I called him and asked him about that provision specifically, and he said, I don't know yet what we're talking about.
Yeah.
The last version I saw had the building, he checked, the most recent version he has is the where it says the building inspector or um their designate. I think technically it was Kurt designate, but.
Okay.
So I and I don't know, since it's not redlined, I actually and I didn't sit down and compare line by line what was changed. I assumed this had been sent to Joe and just found out recently there wasn't, so I don't, I'm not sure what the other changes that Stuart proposed were.
Well, I don't know if he didn't, if he just didn't get it, 'cause there was there was a letter that they sent to Katie and I not attached it. So maybe he didn't get it because there wasn't any attachment, but um.
Mm-hmm. Awesome. Well, and and just uh uh just to to be complete too, is is you know, just to be on record, I I disagree with with Sally's proposed amendment to half acre 'cause I'm not particularly invested in passing a law that doesn't apply to the vast majority of the village, so.
Well, I obviously don't wanna set a public hearing on something we're gonna have to change again, but um.
That's my fear, it it could be fine, but if it's not.
So what is everyone doing?
What's the rest of your thing?
Well, that's why I asked if you wanted a formal vote on what I'm proposing. Because if nobody agrees with me.
I think I'm the only one who disagrees, but
Okay.
The larger question, I mean, that's a policy question that we should discuss, we don't need to run that by Joe. Core area half acres, it doesn't matter, it's just policy.
That's all for us, right.
Well, what I'd like.
But 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 if there's legal questions, that was my, the other other questions, I don't care, I get voted down, voted up, whatever.
I mean, that was really the only language that was changed, everything else was grammatical.
Was it? Okay.
And if it makes people more comfortable, I'd suggest, Carrie on that the hearing be set subject to a final review of, we have two weeks, so
Yeah.
final review by Joe.
What what that would mean, we have to set the spend the money and 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 notice it and then have to pull it?
I don't think there that, I think the change you found is the only one I found, and that was that we changed the designate.
But but when we set a public hearing, it has to be the final version of the law, 'cause it has to be available tomorrow to add to the public resident hearing tonight.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I'm saying.
The only.
So if we're not sure what the final language is, we can't set the public hearing.
I cannot really find any substantial changes other than the designate and the one that I wrote.
Well, what is what, what is what he?
Sure.
Yeah, what is the language or their designate?
It's it's come, it's just it's a repeated phrase that comes in?
I I know, I'm saying, what is the language that Joe said?
From the bill. Oh, uh he didn't give me specific language.
You said from the building inspector or their.
Or their designate.
His, her designate.
Yeah, that's standard language.
His, her, that's there.
Usually usually the the rule of thumb to do that.
This is what I'm asking, this is all I'm asking, I just wanna put it in there.
That's what you had originally, Ariana, his, her designate.
Please, please. Um the the general rule of thumb is that the person who has the authority to make the decision is the one who can designate someone else to do it.
Exactly.
But we can't do a lateral, you know, because that and.
I I understand this, all I wanted to know is what I need to change it to, 'cause I'm doing it right now.
Okay, the original language was building inspector or their designate.
Or his, her, designate, don't use their because there's only one.
It's gender neutral, it's not using.
No, it's his, her.
I mean, if that doesn't change the law, if you guys are comfortable changing that back, that's great, if you it's important, I'm available.
I don't care to begin with, so.
I'm actually asking Stuart, 'cause he was the one who wrote it, um
Well, I
is it, it wasn't on a policy level that that being?
Well, I mean, the reason that the reason I did that was because
Mm-hmm.
I I wanted to have some control over who's gonna do this. But you could solve it by just taking out designate altogether and just say building inspector.
That's fine, too.
And then that ended it, you don't have to worry about it.
I really don't care either way, so whatever you guys want me to do, I'm gonna do it right now.
I believe it should be his, her designate because if just say he dropped dead, the department head.
No question.
No, I'm just, the department head would appoint a designate.
Or Holly could do that.
Or Holly.
Who is not the building inspector.
So I I disagree with you, Stuart, I think it has to be his, her designate, which is why I put that amendment in to begin with. It's my own amendment.
Well, I'm I'm happy to argue with it forever, but it's not that important, so I'll
Okay.
I'll see to your wishes.
So are we ready to vote on going to a hearing?
Thought we were putting the chicken feed in a a locked metal container? Or a covered and locked, wasn't that part of uh?
We we agreed to that.
Um yeah, it just says in a metal container.
Yeah, so I mean, you wanna put like covered or like uh some sort of?
Brian had asked that it be covered in a metal container.
And I thought I thought it was included, but we can amend like right here, it's not something that needs to go back for.
In a secured, covered, contained?
Secured, su- covered, yeah.
What's covered?
I don't think care if it's locked, do you?
No, that's not, I mean, unless they're that good.
No.
And Brian and I promise we won't take, come and take the lid off.
Uh, speak here, sorry. Um yeah, and I, you know, I mean I could see just removing designate altogether. Um because really, if if it's the building inspector and I'll forbid something happens to Kathy, we could always, there will be another. and if something happens to Kathy, we could always, there will be another building inspector.
There'll be somebody doing, yeah, doing that job.
But it may also be, Brian, that we have to hire somebody, remember we had the whole discussion of the licensing fee possibly covering hiring a part-time person to do this, because Stuart pointed out, it's a lot of work.
It's a lot, it could be time, it could be time, yes.
So that's why I recommended we put his her designate, and that way, if we have to hire a part-time person, we're covered.
Um. I mean, sure, or or we would have to come back and um add to the law and say, instead of building inspector, chicken inspector.
Well, why not just put it in there? And then we're covered, we don't have to have another hearing.
Yeah, I don't, I mean.
Put it in?
You said just put it in?
His or her designate.
I I mean, I I put it in already, I and if if you guys want me to remove it, I will, I really am okay with it.
And covered, covered is in?
Covered is in.
No.
Okay.
Um did you get, there's a couple references to that designate thing, do you wanna see if there's?
Yeah, uh.
I saw two immediately.
There's there's three in that in that one panel.
There's like, there's like six of them.
Alright, so you got them all cooked, um is there any, like, is there, what's the reason Sally, that you wanna double the acreage to half acre?
Because I I supported the law with the original proposal, a half acre, I disagree with you. Mo- many, many houses in New Pots have our half acre, and my own particular property is exactly a quarter of an acre, and there's no room for chickens, whether it be three or not, there just isn't, I believe room.
Is that because you, does it have the setback requirements for a coop? You don't have room?
Without. Wouldn't be setback requirements for a coop.
But there wouldn't be room for one?
I I actually, this was the question that we asked last time, and I asked Kathy if on a quarter acre you would ha- have the ability to meet setback setback requirements, and she said yes.
Yeah.
But it really depend, I just feel more comfortable with the half acre.
Depends on the shape and property.
Well, yeah, maybe not on yours, but maybe on uh.
Oh, I I I I'm in agreement with you, that was what we had originally said, I was willing to come down, because you basically said you wouldn't vote for it otherwise, so I said, well, I'm willing to compromise on this. But um but I think in in the effort to be humane and have space requirements for the chickens, um that this is more appropriate.
Based on what?
Based on based on property sizes, and and the idea that on somebody's lot, you know, you have to, you can meet setback requirements, but maybe you don't have a lot of space in that quarter acre, because there are trees or something like that, um I think that this will allow the chickens more space.
In addition, chickens are a community type animal, bird, whatever you wanna call them, I grew up on a farm, we had chickens. Six can be very happy together, you get down to minimal, like parents buying Brian and his sister chickens for Easter, which used to happen, okay?
We don't do that.
They they're lonely. But they're lonely, they need more, the larger the flock, the happier the flock.
That's what.
Yes.
That's what I was saying. And so three chickens are miserable, while six are okay?
It's a no's.
You weren't, didn't grow up on a farm.
I did actually, I I'm one, I spent every holiday with them, um.
Anyway, so I can support this, and I thank you, Ariana, for the hard work you've done, but I can't support it if we go down to a quarter acre.
I can't support it if we go up to half, because I I haven't heard any actual reason that is uh consistent to do so.
Okay.
Because there's plenty of parcels, even if yours is not applicable, or maybe yours has too many trees, there's plenty of quarter acre parcels who would have room for both, that would meet all setback requirements, and if the coop is clean, with all the conditions we've set out and met, I actually see no there's no interest, I can see public health, safety, welfare to restrict it to only the larger parcels in the village, but that's just me.
I mean, you know, I do, I do agree that if all the guidelines are met, then it should be a nice coop in the backyard, but I was a little concerned about this, just because you're in very close proximity to your neighbor, um so I mean, that that kinda bothered me, and I thought that.
You don't think having setbacks meets that need? I mean, that's sup- supposedly the purpose of a setback, is to keep things away from annoying distance closest to neighbors, is it not effective in this case?
Right, no, I. I realize that, but. I mean, currently the setbacks are there for, you know, sheds and like things like that, so it's more review than like noise or odor or whatever can come out of it, and I mean
Right.
what I was gonna propose tonight was for half acre, only because I feel that this would ease um the chicken use into the village, and it would it would kind of limit it, like you said, but I think that if within a year we've issued three chicken licenses or just a few, and it seems to be working out, and there's not a lot of complaints, then maybe we can revisit it and you know, make it to smaller lots, but my, I mean, my.
You totally like burned my head.
You know, like, that was that was my, that was my, that was my thought to it, is that, you know, right off the bat, you know, I think this this may not, this may backfire on us, this may not, this may be great, so I'd like to see on a larger scale, and then, you know, like, then we can always move it down, that that was, you know.
I would support that if everything.
But, you know, I mean, we'll see.
Because one of the Stu- one of the things that Stuart has talked to me about is the idea of having, basically, in a year from now, a report from our building inspector about, you know, say there are only three people who will apply, or say we've had, you know, massive problems with this, like, whatever it is, we should revisit it so within a, you know, in the next year, so that we can look at whether or not we want to.
I suggested it at the end of the fiscal year that we get a report.
Okay.
And then, you know, and and I think that if it's, if it works out, I I would probably be willing to go to a smaller size, um I mean, yeah, it's the money in redoing the law, but
I think that's good.
Yeah. Yeah.
that was just my thought on it, so.
Cool, I mean, I think that that's a really reasonable way to view it, works for me.
Sounds good. Alright, so any other discussion? So what's the motion on the table, is to, uh well, we'd have to like, are we scheduled to withdraw, could people just withdraw their motions with all the amendments?
To set a public hearing.
Well, we have.
'Cause then maybe Ariana could just make a motion to just set the voting up for the law as amended, that we don't go back through all this weird ass, do we?
Yeah, sure.
And I'll second that.
Okay, so everyone has ri- has rescinded their original motions.
Come here.
Just to clean, just to clean it up a little bit, it's just simpler, so Ariana, since you're the law, you wanna?
Yes.
She has accepted all of the changes, Katie, so what we're doing is calling for a hearing on the twenty second.
So, I've.
And she'll tell you what the changes are.
Right.
Um yeah, to to move this as amended, sh- should I, should, is it something about Joe in this?
For the law, for the chicken law as amended.
No, because I think everything is the same.
I mean, everything else was the same, yeah.
It's back to where it was, yeah.
Oh, okay, so then you had to set a public hearing on uh August twenty second, seven thirty P M.
Mm-hmm.
All on, all on favor?
And seconded. Alright.
Aye.
Alright, and I'm a no. And let's see, next we have the uh fire contract, uh as I wrote in the email I sent to you yesterday before, there were two versions, the one, I think there's a couple versions of the exact same thing in your packet, actually, 'cause I, one of the other things I realized is I've been, I've been trying to, when I write up with the redlining, I've been creating PDFs
Yeah.
Yes.
and then not looking at them, and I think in making a PDF, it strips all the stuff I've been doing out, so
Oh.
um there is on the table though, I believe, a lo- a c- version of current contract, it may be a loophole, uh but at a similar meeting, and I'll just say here for the record, uh um I originally met with uh Bill and Kevin, and we had troubles when Sally and I met, and then me and Brian met, and then I think Brian and Sally met, and then me and Stuart met, I think Ariana the only one who actually was involved in approaching this contract, I think at the various points, but we did finally come to to a consensus, um the 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 real major change of the contract is under item seven surplus funds, and it basically puts in the contract the conversation we had at budget time
Mm-hmm.
about shifting from just dumping all the leftover reserves and making a flat rate for better predictable financing, um but when I was doing that,
Mm-hmm.
um as you can see, I think the con- contract itself was confusing to read, so I actually rewrote it in the best common sense English I could, renumbered every line, so that every concept had a different number, so we can, for ease of renegotiation later, and at first I was proposing this just as an alternate, if it was not a big deal, we could do it, if we're gonna hold things up, just put it off till next year, but then after I was part in the packet, I heard from Joe, Ariel, I heard from Bill DeBois, Joe tells me that I didn't, my concern was I was changing a a inadvertently changing a legal term, he says, it looks good, it's fine, Bill DeBois in present progress says, it looks fine to me,
Mm-hmm.
so if you guys are willing, I'd like to propose this to the town, which is a cleaned up version with that one significant change, which the supervisor's already aware of and thinks is a decent idea, um
And I will second it.
other than that, and yeah, and I.
I will second motion and.
But hold on, I made a motion, yeah.
Well.
You said, I want that I would recommend to the town, that's a second.
He proposed not mo- not made a motion.
Yeah, well, um well, if I remember, I moved that we send this contract over to the town for their discussion, there, Brian Newsome?
And I seconded it.
Um. So I mean, I mean, I guess if Bill's already seen this, then we're pretty far along, and he was okay with uh, I mean, obviously it has to go to the general reserve fund for the village, we we've.
Yeah, I'm sorry, there was, what was that change? There was one.
That that was, that was the s- um seventy, so then, so it goes to the village's general reserve.
Yeah, the ladies. Seventy.
I've lived on the two, three.
Yeah, this is village's general reserve fund.
Right, yeah, that's that's what I'm saying, so so he's aware that it's going to the general reserve, but not to the the fire reserve.
Yeah.
Is that going to the fire?
Yes, yeah, 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 he's he's fine with that, he's fine with that.
He's okay with that, and then we have E, the town's portion of unexpendable fund balance shall be used to reduce the town's fire tax in the following fiscal year um by the same amount of ex- unexpendable funds received, and they were, I mean, we checked that out, and that's.
That was a their request, actually, that's.
The the town's request.
For one you and I proposed.
No, the fire company's request, uh yeah, just.
The fire company's request, right, yes.
Ari, you made a, made a, the rest has gotten earful, but um, 'cause on the town, in the town, uh when you go to tax law, there's a separate fire tax line,
Mm-hmm.
so because it's a separate fund, the fire company wanted to make sure that that could be over into into that one fund, whereas in the village, all is one big pot, so it doesn't.
Speaking of. I was wondering whether you'd work a two week in the, the unlucky, so that the public gets paid.
So so all the problems that were along with D are no longer problems?
With the long D?
Yeah, the village is watching any, and it's gonna be fund balance, and the village's general reserve fund, wasn't that the problem?
No, the problem was is that in the past, because it's been a joint town village, um anything left over the end of the year goes back in the fire reserve, yeah, oh, I I don't know.
Right, I understand. So was, and and so that that, I'm asking, that problem has been solved?
Once this, if this contract is signed, it probably will be solved, yes.
But but this has been seen by Bill, and he approves it, so.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
But i- but instead of having a number that you don't know what it is going into the reserve, which is everything that's left over, it's gonna be a set number, it's gonna be fifty thousand dollars, and then everything that's left over from the the contract beyond that is re- returned, depending if you're the village or the town.
It's it's specified.
Right. Goes inside.
Yeah.
Yeah, and wasn't that something that, wasn't that what, what, isn't that the p- piece that was holding this up?
Where it was to be returned was the piece that was holding it up, in other words, they didn't want it to go back in the town's general fund, they wanted it to go to fire purposes.
Mm-hmm.
For the purposes of reducing the fire tax.
Go, right, I know, but 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 that, okay.
Bill is good, Bill is good with that, parks. Uh we don't have the town news yet, 'cause they haven't seen it, but.
Right, but but I'm saying that, you know, what we wanted is what this is.
Yes, yes, everything we want is in there.
And it's a two-year contract.
Right, I saw that.
And the and the whole thing paid, the town's part is all paid in one payment, at the beginning, near the beginning.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Um, so fifty thousand is gonna be split twenty-five, twenty-five.
Mm-hmm, uh well, the way it's written, it's not actually split twenty-five, twenty-five, it's split in proportion to the way we fund it, which is roughly the same, forty-seven, fifty-three, whatever it is, I think, yeah.
To the the calls, okay, right, okay, whatever it is, yeah, it's, I mean, it was off by a percentage point.
Rough, it's basically fifty.
But, um, and the one other thing is that, I mean, it's going to our general reserve fund, but with no there's nothing here stipulating that we're using it to pay for fire, um.
No.
Well, we actually, do we wanna use the word general reserve or general fund balance, is there a difference? There isn't a difference, is there?
No, it is general fund balance, really.
It's general fund balance, not reserve.
You're right.
Okay, so that's 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 the.
Sorry, we said we were.
Because there is, because there is a difference, yes.
Yes. It's it's o- it's okay to do that because twenty-five thousand or whatever the percentage is, is gonna go in from the village.
Twenty, right, yeah. Right, to the reserve.
In any event.
Right, that's, yes, um.
Which the treasurer thinks is fine.
Okay.
It's the general fund balance, not the reserve.
No. Um so my other question is, we're obligating the town to put this money toward the fire, um but we're not obligating ourselves to do so.
We don't have a separate fire tax.
Well, I mean, we, Jason and I discussed with Bill if it's really, you know, they bill it separately as a fire tax, but theoretically, it's all just one tax, they just line it up.
Not not for them, they they they, bookkeeping, the bookkeeping is separate in in the in the town, actually, but in the village, it's all one pot.
Not for them?
Well, they see it on their bill.
Yes, it's a difference in the town, and that's the big issue.
Yeah, there was a question about whether the town's legally able to put it into their general fund balance.
No.
And that's why we.
No, I thought the the question was whether they can put it directly into the fire, we, 'cause that's what they were originally doing, is, and what, that's why when um the town gets money for the police through U C R A, the police can't take it,
No. Yeah.
they have to go, or not U C R A, the whatever the county step program is, they have to put it in the general fund, and the town allocates it to the police, or supposed to allocate it to the police department,
Right.
and that's why we put in that clause, when me, me, you, Bill, Kevin spoke, about, well, they didn't want it, they wanted to make sure it was going to the fire
Yeah.
because they didn't want it to go to the general fund, it was not, but I'm saying, we're s- we're still allowing ourselves to take it to the general fund and possibly not use it for the fire department.
Right.
That's right, because it, because the twenty-five thousand's going into the fire reserve no matter what, and then this is.
Definitely not the general fund.
Right, but the town's paying twenty-five thousand as well, so why are we telling them how they have to spend their role?
No, 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 it's.
They're not, they're gonna tell us if they're okay with the contract.
No, in other words, the twenty-five from each are gonna go in the reserve, that's it, no matter what, and then what happens if the budget we put out is there's money?
Right, yes. There's still role, right.
Or we only have one pot of money in the village, and that's where it's going, the town has, they bill separately for the fire, so they wanna make sure if there's four thousand twenty dollars that comes off of next year's fire allocation for this contract to the taxpayers.
Right, this is exac- this is exactly what I'm saying, we're not requiring ourselves to use it toward fire, but we're requiring the town to use it toward fire.
I understand what you're saying.
Because they have an A fund, a B fund, a D B fund, and all those other little funds that they have, it could never be in the A fund.
You could. You could think about it this way, the fire department money, the fire department money that we, the the money that the village gives to the fire department comes from our general fund,
It's their general fund, their B fund.
Right.
and therefore the money is returned to the fund from which it came, in the town, they fund the fire department from their fire tax fund, and is returned to the fund from which it came, so
Right.
I don't know if that's helpful, but I mean, they're, we also, we're also negotiating for the town right now, whereas, you know, the, in my mind, let them tell us if they don't like this or not, we don't need to negotiate their position.
No, okay, so you're saying it's. Right.
Right, it's not our.
See, see, my understanding was that the line for fire tax was just just a way of saying, this is how much of your tax money goes to fire, they're not collecting that and then only put, like, they are still sending money from the general fund to the fire.
No, they're not.
So they don't collect one big pot of money, they collect separate line items for each one.
In the A fund.
Yeah, A fund, B fund, the fire tax, there's special district funds, 'cause we're we're basically one giant special district.
So, but it's.
There there there's taxing districts in the town, there's street lighting districts that you have, there's all sorts of things.
Right, yes, yes, but.
But is it actually a separate fund, or is it a line within the A or the B?
Right.
I don't know, this is our proposed, the village's proposed contract to the town, the town can deal with this as they see fit, let them argue, figure that out, if if there's something they were proposing they can do, they can tell us.
It's not a rock.
You definitely don't want to go the A fund, Ariana.
Oh, fine.
Well, the A fund.
I I know, I know, I I mean, it's not a matter of where I want it, I understand what Brian is saying, that, yeah.
Right, we're forcing them to do something that we may not be forcing, well, we're asking them.
We're not forcing them to do that. We're asking if you like this idea, and they're gonna come back and say, we can't do it, or we can't do it, or we don't want to, or here's a reason why, or here's an alternative, and that's, and we'll get that back, and if we like it, we'll sign it, if not, we'll send it elsewhere.
Okay, proposing. Okay.
I'm not gonna get him on a labor negotiating.
He's just gonna negotiate with the union, yeah, that wasn't an insult, that was actually a compliment.
Um.
Um.
Can we go to this?
Well, would you just stop trying to jump in on everything, I wanna make sure everyone's had their say before we.
I don't think he's done yet.
Yeah, I mean, so, so my my only other issue is that, you know, I I mean, I should've looked for the old contract, and I, you know, admittedly, I only picked these up, I reviewed them briefly, but I didn't get to compare word for word with the old contract, so, you know, I, you know, I pe- I went and obviously looked at the points immediately, what I need to see, but you know what, if you wanna like offer it up to them,
Mm-hmm.
I can, you know, I'd be happy to like review it again, and if there's anything that, you know, comes out, you know, pointed out, maybe that'll have to be changed.
Look, and if it's urgent, we can generally sign it, if not, we can put it off till next year and put it in the next, put it in the next contract, if it's just a longer range thing.
Yeah.
And and this is a different, and that it's a two-year contract as opposed to a one-year.
Right, yes, I noticed that as well, um.
Well, any other concerns, questions, whatever?
So the motion is just to send this version to the town and see what they think about it?
Mm-hmm.
To approve it then. We approve it and send it to the town.
Uh right, that's.
To approve it and send it to the town.
And should we mention in that that it has it's already been approved by the fire department, fire company or whoever it is that doesn't matter.
No, we can we do it on their behalf. We do it on behalf of the whole village, okay.
And we have their signature on it?
No, we we can't. No one's gonna give a signature just.
It's not just the whole party until we all agree, whatever.
Okay.
Uh anything else for?
I will uh separate motion is for this, but yeah, let's go.
Uh on to, alright, hi.
I I I would like to move that the treasurer.
Wait, wait, mm.
Wait, 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 please. Are you did you are you voting against or?
Do on- only because like I didn't get to really go through this. I don't know if I should vote I for the approval and the motion to send over to the town. I guess.
That's a moral question. Flip a coin.
I mean I guess I guess I'll um. I I'm just gonna vote no, not because I think it's bad, just because I didn't get to
Fair enough.
review it as much as I should.
I would like to move that the treasurer be directed to allocate fifty thousand dollars in within the fu- fire budget this year for the purposes or twenty-five thousand for the purposes of the reserve.
Uh well, let's uh I guess we can talk about it if you'd like. There are a couple of exceptions there. Is there a second to that?
The reason is that this is different language than we have had. What Bill and Jason and Kevin negotiated is different language. This is now a two-year contract. The original proposed contract that we talked about prior to the negotiation, let all unused money go back into the reserve at during this budget year. So if we're going to approve this contract, then what we need to do is modify our budget to set aside the amount of money for.
That's next year's motion.
Well, whatever.
We're on a year lag, so we don't have to do it in this fiscal year. We do it starting in the next.
I believe we need to.
Because we've already transferred money for this year into the reserve.
Starting with the the.
Because of when we closed the books on the twenty-eleven twenty-two fiscal year, the year-end balance of under a thousand went into the reserve this year in this fiscal year.
Right, this will be twenty-twelve to twenty-thirteen.
Right, this will year, this this contract is for two thousand twelve thirteen.
Into two thousand thirteen. So at the end of this year, it would either rollover into the reserve or if this contract is signed, then we would have to put money in. But I would say that it's preemptive. The town hasn't even agreed to this.
No, but I'm just saying that we have agreed to it. This is our position on contract right now. And therefore we need to modify our budget correctly.
We don't no, that I disagree. I very much disagree. And I think you should talk to Nancy about it.
I did, and you did too.
Uh I did, yeah.
I mean until until.
Starting with fiscal year twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. That's next year.
No.
The percent, so.
The amount this amount will be written to the fire by prior to the adoption of the for fiscal year two thousand twelve, thirty, any expend unexpendable remaining funds will be transferred.
Yeah. Which means at the end of the fiscal year, May thirty-first of twenty thirteen.
Your contract is for two thousand twelve fourteen.
I'm Sally, I'm and there's a lag. It our fiscal years don't line up. The look, the email you just threw in my map literally says for fiscal year twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, when we're in, any unexpended remaining funds, which means unexpended remaining funds at the end of the fiscal year, May thirty-first of next year,
Right.
will be transferred to the fire reserve fund.
All of it.
Since the fifty thousand is not written into the twenty twelve, twenty thirteen budget prior to adoption. And then the following year, we do fifty. Look, I'm reading right from what Nancy said, so.
Okay, I'm reading your contract. We are late in getting a contract with the fire department. We are already into the first year of a new contract.
I know where we are.
And that's what this is saying to us, whatever you did with my memo.
Brian, sorry.
If we don't modify.
I'm thinking that's what I'm saying. That's what I mean by there's a year lag for us. Which means even when this contract expires, we will be abiding by its terms for one fiscal year longer than the town. There's a there's a we're staggered.
Right. Right, unremained funds will. See, I don't understand. So this is saying that see, but I don't understand that because this ye- this would make me believe that if they signed on to the the end of this year, we would do the fifty thousand instead of the rollover. So right, but this that's not what this is saying. This is saying for twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, the any unexpended funds will just go into the.
Right.
No.
Unless we modify our budget to reflect what the contract is proposing.
I'm not sure.
Well, this isn't saying to modify it. This doesn't say to modify it. This just says that but I but I don't know because that doesn't make sense to me based on that.
What does it says it?
I'm gonna ask I'm gonna ask that we have a resolution for the next meeting from the treasurer that reflects what we need to do.
That would be great, yeah. That'd be perfect. Cause we gotta wait for the town to get back to us anyway. We've got time.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, so are you rescinding your motion then? Are you rescinding your motion?
Hmm? No, I'm approving. Oh, oh, yeah. Thank you, Katie.
No. Yeah, we can do both. It's not it's not we don't vote one off for the other.
Yeah, withdraw, I think.
And uh Katie, just so you know for your agenda, the the one correction is at the top of the general it should be general fund balance. So you can just add that to the clean the.
The best, the best, the best.
Thank you. Uh alright, so did we vote on sending it on?
Yeah.
Yes, for for our eyes one day.
Yes.
And then Sally, okay, great.
Okay.
Perfect.
Now we need to and we voted on, now we need to vote on my motion to have a resolution from the treasurer.
We don't need to vote on that. It's just something we can get to the agenda.
Okay.
Put it on.
So we remember.
Yeah, just get just talk to Nancy, have her write it out.
No, the email was to you.
It was your idea to have a resolution on the agenda. You're responsible for getting the documentation.
I am not responsible for an email to you.
I. No, and I agree with her email. You don't have to disagree, Sally.
No, you don't agree to her email.
Do you want me to do it?
Yeah.
Um well, I guess we'll go down the list. Just make sure that I didn't miss anything on these little bullets. Oh, I'm sorry, I I did almost. Uh discussion of Team New Pals.
Uh well, I'll I'll start. It's.
Yeah. Yeah, you can.
Uh as you as you know, at the uh hundred and twenty-fifth celebration, uh we were uh taking pledges from uh go New New Pals volunteers to uh give at least five hours of their time, uh just kind of starting the the program off. And there were over fifty of those that we have the data on. And we'll start assembling it.
Over fifty we got?
Yeah. And uh we are also uh the community foundation has has approved uh it setting up an endowment if if we go forward with that uh to uh you know to save a park endowment uh to go in parallel with this. And then Ariana and I are also gonna be you know working on the details of the uh adopt a park that we mentioned for the statute that was with our memo. And so when we have more on that, we will report it. What else? What did I leave out?
People seem really enthusiastic. Uh a lot of people I I like calling it a a cohesive stewardship because that has almost its name in it. Um but people really like the idea that uh you know we're trying to get people together. And and I think it's we're gonna have a lot of positive feedback.
Yeah.
Did anybody volunteer to come on commission, boards?
Well, that that's uh you know, that's what we talk to people about. I used to have the pledge forms. I mean they.
Yeah, yeah.
We have to analyze them closer.
Yeah, I mean some people sounded like they would be willing to do like I I I explained to people that there are tiers of involvement and that um you can do something for only one day and fulfill your five hours with something like the New Pals Clean Sweep, or you can make a larger commitment and join a board committee or commission. Um so I think that you know people want more information on what's gonna be going on and they're interested. Yeah, it's exciting.
Cool.
And thanks for helping out. And you guys were all were at the table recruiting volunteers just like we were, so.
It was fun. Especially the rain.
Oh, yeah, that was the most fun part.
That was good. Uh alright, well, thank you. We have now uh Katie wants a laptop. Actually, I think we want Katie to have a laptop.
Yes.
So Katie initially initially gave uh two options that she was gonna ask us to approve. And I just told her, you know, don't it's forty dollar difference. Tell me the what you need and let's get that before the board. So uh I'd like to move to approve the clerk's request about the per laptop as described.
Which one?
Yeah, that's what I.
The only one there.
I think it's it there's only one, but it's two different prices. I got two different price groups, but it's.
No, there are two.
Oh, that's quick. That's quick the price.
So I would move that we buy the model for four ninety-nine.
Oh, oh, that one, I see. There's no difference? Just price?
It's the exact same model, just one comes from Newegg and one comes from Dell Direct.
So in in future, you don't have to give us two prices if they're just give us the cheaper one. As long as it's identical, give us the cheapest price. Um so as amended, uh
Okay.
Okay.
any is there a second to that?
Second.
And any discussion?
Is uh does either does Newegg have a better customer service or anything like that than Dell does? Is there?
I I didn't pursue that um because in selecting this particular laptop, I went to our tech support system and said to them
Okay. Right.
um this is what we're thinking of doing. Can you please suggest something to me that is can can do the job, that is compatible with the um desktops that are held in the clerk's office and in
Right.
our office in general and something that they can feel comfortable that they could support in case something happened. Um and they gave me a choice of two models and um
Right. Great.
I selected the Dell because it was a name brand, um and I thought it might be a safer choice. And then I just looked for two prices to try and get the best price possible for the taxpayers.
Sure. Right. So Brian uh Brian and our techs might can work on it if we have any issues and that's why we have them.
Right, and that's why I went to him as 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 a support in making this choice so that we would that because he would be the person.
Great, yeah. And what's this about Netflix so you can watch during the board meetings? I don't understand that.
No, no, that's what I have the nook for. I'm good.
No, right, okay. Okay, so I I think that's all of my um.
Any other comments? Um all in favor?
Hi.
I.
Hi, thank you. Uh move that we pay out sick time accrued by Plutroilgar?
A second.
Any discussion?
Do it.
Yeah, a little bit. I was kinda hoping we could talk about this in executive briefly, if that'd be possible.
Sure, I need to go back in anyway.
Yeah, thank you.
Um and I move we approve those in claims?
Second.
On favor? Alright, hi. Uh number whatever, well, I think this is multiple number six, but uh the Grant Lions, uh this has been a little bit revised.
I.
Okay, why did that in executive section? That's why I didn't.
Do we need to do that?
I don't think so.
I don't think so either. You wanna uh well, I guess I'll just it's it's a little bit different than what we uh had within the packet. We're.
Okay. I can.
Okay, you wanna get it? Sure.
Okay. Um as per the request of the chairman of the zoning board of appeals, um we're not gonna act on the contract tonight but rather I will move that the board approve Mister Lyons as special counsel to Z B A at a rate of a hundred and fifty dollars per hour which will include the prep time that he needs on Monday with the Z B A board and his attendance at the Z B A hearing on the fourteenth, which involves an appeal of one twenty-seven Main Street.
I'll second that. Any questions, discussion?
So this is just for this?
Just for this.
Just for this as of now and then we'll go on from there.
And then we will revisit the whole contract later.
Do you know uh if this is one of several firms that was looked at or is there some particular reasons? I I read the the resume for the people and it seemed highly qualified. I just wondered was there any process here where they looked at several or just somebody knew somebody or how did we come up with these people?
Sure. Um the Z Z B A attorneys are not chosen by us, they are approved by us.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
The kind of.
They come from the recommendation of the Z B A.
Right, do I mean but do we know how they came up on that recommendation? Was there a process?
I don't. Katie, is on there.
Uh Chairman Budman stopped by the clerk's office and said that he would like to engage a different counsel.
Mm-hmm.
Um in no disparaging way to anyone.
Right, right.
Um and said that he had approached several local attorneys um and that they um for a variety of reasons were would be unavailable to do so.
Mm-hmm.
And that he had worked with Grant Grant and Lyons as a Z B A as the Z B A attorney in the past um and was confident in their their abilities and was that's who he suggested he would like to work with. And so um we contacted them to to send us information about the possibility of engaging them.
Okay.
The firm is Grantland Lyons. As I said, the special appointment is John Lyons. And that is the motion.
And it's been seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Alright, I. Um let's see. Uh five I'd I'd like to refresh the table because I don't have anything about this and I don't know
Wow.
how much money is requested, where it's from, whether it's about.
There's yeah, first of all, which five?
Request, I'm right going right down the list. It's a one after right after the one we just finished. Request for authorization to expand revolving loan funds. There was no documentation and I'm not sure it was legal or not.
Yeah.
Well, I I I was more about I I discussion item rather than uh uh let me say why that's on there. Um the newly formed revolving loan committee is going to meet
Well, that's what I was wondering about that.
and I and I anticipate that they're gonna recommend that we get a set of more or less standard loan documents put together so that applicants uh will know what it is they're facing. Uh and the the funds for that will come out of the fund itself where you know that we have over five hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's been sitting there for a period of time. Um.
Are we legally allowed to use it for that purpose?
The treasurer says we are, but we can check that with her again if you want. So I don't I don't know. I I just wanna give everyone a heads up that this will be a request and I and I can't mention they're gonna do that. And we would pick a transactional attorney who has experience and ask them to draw no mortgage personal guarantee, the things that would go with most uh loan applications so that uh part of the packet when you come to apply for a loan would be uh these are the kind of things you'd be facing, so that's I just wanna say that that's probably coming and you can be thinking about it.
Oh, so. So Stuart, this isn't because anybody's applied for it. This is asking if it's okay to and generate the application and printed forms.
To generate an application. This is.
Well, it's not the it's they well, we have the application and certain documents from the past and and the committee will look at those.
Mm-hmm.
But uh because the the problem, at least one problem that they had in the past from the few files that are available to look at was uh the collateral that I think it's gonna be important to document what kinds of things will be expected of the applicants in form of collateral. So when they come to make an application,
Mm.
this is the kind of thing we're looking at, so we don't wa- waste any of our time.
But my question is what what authorization to expand funds are you looking for?
Looking forward to have an an attorney um prepare a a standard set of documents in behalf of the committee that we all would approve. And then uh be- before you go out and start marketing the program and say, okay, we're open for business. This is the application. This is what you can be expecting if your loan's approved and so forth. So that I just want everyone to be thinking of that because it'll cost money.
We don't have an action on it tonight.
No.
Okay.
But I think you should be thinking about it if you have any questions and the concerns that you can ask Ariana or me and we'll see the make sure the committee talks about that.
Might we see that not necessarily approval, but when they're finally ready to go, could we all just look at them?
I believe actually it's.
You're gonna have to approve or you're gonna have to you're gonna have to approve them.
Any revolving loan fund.
No, no, I'm not giving. I'm not talking about the money. I'm just talking about the form and what I'm required
Hmm.
The guidelines, yeah.
to put up in the way of collateral, the suggested processes.
Right, you will that'll definitely that'll definitely come before this board.
We're waiting for proposals.
Okay.
I mean we got I think a kind of a real a group of knowledgeable people who are gonna have input into this. And it's just that we're gonna have to spend some money to get uh money to get some uh basic documents prepared in order to go forward.
Great. Um alright, moving on. Bill's board minutes. Uh I do have one question, Katie. Um because I realize we've got we're a little bit slipshod in some of our process and some things Brian and Sally have both said over the past week or two reminded me of it. Um now the minutes that we have here were any any unless it's spelling or grammar, no 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 trustee has the individual authority to change. Any, unless it's spelling or grammar, no, no, no trustee has the individual authority to change the meaning of a sentence in the minutes.
I've not, I have not been asked to change anything.
That's what, I wanna make sure we're all on the same page, that it's just spelling and grammar and not content that we're able to change and submit changes, if you think, if you think you missed, you're misquoted, we should probably start bringing those things back to the table to make sure we're all on the same page before it goes into formal records, I just, before we got in that, I wanna make sure that the changes you got were spelling, grammar, like, no meanings were changed.
No meanings were in any way changed.
Okay. Not more than this accidentally, so.
Right, um, no meanings were changed, and there were structured, there were in some te- sent, in some cases, a structural change, but nothing that changed the intent of the statement that was made, I was very careful about.
All right, just wanna double check and double check with that, cause that could come back to bite us if we forget about something.
Two questions before we act on this, number one, June twenty-sixth, as I pointed out the last time, does not get approved, now it goes to the general board meeting, so you need to pull those. I do not have any minutes for July twenty-fifth.
Uh, yes, we do.
I don't.
I do.
Hmm?
I do, they're in front of me.
I've seen them.
But they weren't in my packet.
Yeah, they're, I didn't get them.
Uh, well.
No, none of them are in the packet, they're, they're all about these cards.
I don't, yeah, I don't know about packets, cause I I do everything online, so I I don't know, but.
Um, that's the newest, that's the newest one?
The July eleventh would have been sent out to you at, in this whole grouping of things, July eighteenth would have been generated by Kelly, um, and sent directly to you, and July twenty-fifth was completed on July twenty-sixth, and emailed directly to everyone.
Yeah.
Oh. Wow, his name was Kelly Ward. Right.
Okay. So, I do have some, I think grammatical changes, I didn't make notes that I wanted to, can I give them to you at the end of the meeting and
All right.
would that be appropriate, I'll I'll like note them while I'm in executive session.
That would be just. Absolutely.
All right, I'll move the approval of the minutes, uh, the twenty-third, the thirteenth, the twentieth, the twenty-seventh, July eleventh.
We'll wait until we get, come out of the executive session, so I can just give her my amendment.
Well, if you're just doing grammar, doesn't, we've already agreed the grammar changes are fine.
That doesn't matter.
All right, um, and you brought you the twenty-fifth, gang, and you're okay?
Mm-hmm.
That's the one from you, that's the email, the one we got by emailing, yes, that's the one we're in, that's probably.
All right, July twenty-fifth. Hmm?
Yeah.
Okay. But I'm saying, come on, I I moved them out.
So.
Okay.
So we move, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, if I haven't seen the finalized version, we'll we'll do the finalized, sorry, or I guess these are just my recommendations for change and they're up to Katie, I appreciate that.
Well, there's grammar and spelling, there's a bit of change, I mean, we we wanna grammatically correct and all that, so that's just.
Right, well, I mean, like, this, for example, wasn't issued, I mean.
Yeah, that that's a grammatical change, taking care of that.
That's grammatical.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we all.
Oh, okay, okay, so, yeah, I would say, then I think I'm good, and I'll just give you like.
You're good? So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nice, all our minutes called out.
Okay.
And finally, I move to go into executive session to discuss the employment history of a given person, blah 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 blah, and press on the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.